I believe so. Mister? Okay, I'll go. I'll go meet him. Just take a second.
Okay.
Hello and welcome to the St. Charles County Council Meeting of November 25th, 2019. This evening, we have Mr. Brian Andrews from Amazing Grace Baptist Church is going to give us the invocation. And after that, Mr. Brazel will give the pledge. Very good. Everybody rise.
Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we sure thank you and praise you for your mercy to us. And thank you for this time of the year, how good you've been to us. And, Lord, I think about how good you've been to me. Lord, so we don't deserve your mercy. But I sure thank you for it. Thank you for your excellent kindness and your goodness. Thank you for the gospel. Thank you, Lord, for your wisdom. Thank you for this assembly here tonight and these dear folks that serve and, Lord, serve. And, Lord, we sure need your wisdom. God, without you, we can do nothing. Lord, thank you for our great country, our heritage and the freedom you've given us. Lord, I pray that you'd hedge about these families that are represented here in this assembly. Lord, would you bless them? Lord, would you remind us, Lord, to give you thanks for everything? Lord, thank you for giving us life. Lord, I thank you for your promises that are true and faithful. Lord, I pray that we would just take extra time to remember you and your goodness. And, Lord, thank you for this great country, this great assembly. And, Lord, thank you that you're coming again. I praise you for it. Bless these men and women here today. I pray that you'd bless their families in a special way this Thanksgiving. And I know a lot of folks will be traveling. Lord, I pray that you'd also grant us safety and just more of your mercy. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Let me have roll call, please.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the conditional use permit and bills for final passage, starting with Bill Number 4784.
Bill Number 4784, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 19-04A for a private club to Alexander Richardson Weber LLC, property owner applicant.
Exhibit C was timely received. And Bill Number 4784 and 4785 are ready for final passage.
Any questions? Any questions?
Oh, any discussion? Then read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 19-04A for a private club to Alexander Richardson Weber LLC, property owner applicant. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Bill Number 4784 has passed. We'll move on to Bill 4785.
Bill Number 4785, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 19-04B for a restaurant associated with a private club to Alexander Richardson Weber LLC, property owner applicant.
Any questions or comments on Bill Number 4785? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 19-04B for a restaurant associated with a private club to Alexander Richardson Weber LLC, property owner applicant. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill 4785 has passed. We'll move on to public comments. This is when anybody can come before the council and speak on any topic. But once the topic has been achieved, then we request there be three speakers pro, three speakers con, and that the time limit is three minutes. Are there any speakers?
Joyce Wiley.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all so much for listening to my story. I'm here to communicate my situation involving involuntary annexation on my property in unincorporated Lake St. Louis. I'm here, my name is Joyce Wiley, and I've lived off Dwello Road on an unincorporated 20-acre Missouri Conservation Certified Black Walnut Tree Farm for 34 years. My home is on five acres, and the 15 acres that Lake St. Louis is interested in is agricultural. My home was built by Conrad Anton Dwello in 1875. The reasons for not annexing, excuse me, all homes on the east side of Dwello Road, from Dwello Elementary School to off-road, about one mile long, are three-to-12-acre unincorporated homes. My property is unsuitable for city purposes. It's unsuitable for a subdivision. It has two creeks, a spring, and a half a mile of rocky cliffs and a wildlife food plot. Year-round working tree farm, practicing timber, stand improvement, and six acres of mowing walnut fields, also a working sawmill. My family and I are actively involved in walnut console and elderberry workshops. Lake St. Louis is on my north boundary with 283 homes that was once a forest two years ago. I agreed to a temporary construction easement at the end of their road that ended at my property line. Bulldozers took down more trees than we agreed to on the walnut field. A large number of trees on the same north field on the fence line were left with half of their roots and will die within five years and possibly fall on the homes that are there. My forester, Dan, from Missouri Conservation noticed this when he came out for inspection. This year, Lake St. Louis wanted a 50-foot-wide hiking trail that started at the above road that they left on easement, and it would extend through the walnut field and up a hill through mature woods and extend east through the Catholic cemetery to Lake St. Louis Boulevard. I have, my children and grandchildren are going to carry on with the farm. What is the advantage to be annexed to Lake St. Louis, I've asked? Well, you'll get police protection from Lake St. Louis. I feel that the county police is more than adequate. On December 16th, at 7:00, the Lake St. Louis Board of Aldermen will be meeting at 200 Civic Center Drive, and this is the meeting that they will be voting on my annexation involuntarily. Also, if you'd like to go online, oh, sorry, you need to go online to read about the Missouri law that was passed in 1973 on the Sawyer Act. So they're really strict about-
I hate to interrupt you, but it's a three-minute time limit?
Yeah, that's it. I did it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask some questions. If there's two other speakers on this topic, I'd rather wait till they're done, and then if I could ask your permission, ask some questions. Joyce, are your neighbors going to speak as well?
Do you want to add anything?
No, did they fill out a card?
Did they fill out a card? Yes, okay.
Tony Dewerst.
Good evening, councilmembers. I own the property Number 3 Dobbs Lane, which borders with Mrs. Wiley's property. I have five-and-a-quarter acres, which is also black walnut trees. We have been there since 1980 and have, we no longer are a registered tree farm because we're too small for their qualifications, but the trees are still present and still bearing nuts. I have not been notified of any annexation interest in my property, but since it's up against Mrs. Wiley's, I would assume that we would be the next group. I want to just go on record as not agreeing with an annexation. We've been St. Charles County agricultural rural property, and the services are adequate for our needs, and we enjoy the nice lifestyle that we have. That's my comment, and I believe we have one more resident.
Henry Knopper.
Yeah, I'm Henry Knopper, and I'm kind of the caretaker of the place. I run the sawmill and all that kind of stuff. And I, you know, the Lake St. Louis might think they're doing something with their 50-foot-wide hiking trail. That's a road. I mean, the 50-foot easement, that's just a road. I guess they think we don't know what we're doing or something, but, and, oh, we need land, we need land. Well, why didn't McBride &amp; Son think about that when they plotted this big subdivision they put there? Why do they have to, and eventually what they want to do probably is take over probably eminent domain, her property. That's what I see coming. I've seen this before. I'm not from around here. I'm from Cleveland, Ohio, but I've been here a long time, and that's what I've seen there. So I don't have anything to say other than that, and I'm, of course, against the annexation, and it's a wonderful piece of property, and I think it mounts to, from my point of view, it amounts to a land grab. That's what I look at it as. I have nothing more to add to that.
Mr. Chairman. Just a minute. Are there any other speakers on this topic?
Wayne McDaniel.
On this topic? Okay.
I'm Wayne McDaniel, 1958 Dwello Road. I'm a neighbor of Joyce's. I have 10 acres where I live, and from time to time, Lake St. Louis seeks to annex that property. I don't know to what extent this is a concern of the council here, but if something is happening in St. Charles County, and they apparently want the land for no reason other than tax purposes. It's not being developed. I'm not developing it, and they can't develop it. So it just doesn't, it doesn't seem right. Don't know who to talk to, so we thought we'd talk to you. Thank you.
Do you live on that property, sir?
He lives on his property.
Okay.
Do I live on the property? Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. We'll break protocol and allow some questions.
The reason I had Joyce come in is she's been calling me, and I found it hard to believe that Paul Marquardt keeps calling her and harassing her, and this has been going on for years, and it's intensified. And so they're bringing it to the city council to annex, to do an involuntary annexation. Now, the thing is, she has 20 acres, and they broke five acres off of the house, but in hindsight, shouldn't it have happened? Because now she, the 15 acres or whatever that partially, out of 15 acres, there's no one that can vote on it. I told her to put a trailer there, a mobile hole, move a mobile hole in there. We'll pass it for you and get somebody in here to vote for you, but all it takes is one no vote. But this is total harassment, and the folks in that area have been there a very long time, and it seems like Lake St. Louis is totally harassing these people. And so they're going to annex her property and do an involuntary annexation, and then use eminent domain for a park. That is, like, terrible. I mean, and that's why I thought it was important for her to come in, because she is, it's bad, you know? Upsets me, but.
I have a family that contacted me about two properties down Highway K that O'Fallon is doing the same thing to. One is a long-term office of a sod company that's been there since the '60s. The other is a rural, very rural piece of ground that borders up against the Reynard Family Center ground. Same way, O'Fallon's pressured them to annex in the city. They've been there like these folks have been for decades. O'Fallon doesn't want anything to do with them, and they're asking me straight up, is there anything you can do at the county level to stop that? Now, it's not my district, okay, but I know the family my whole life, and I think it's pretty bad when these cities have to stoop to these measures to get us to land with their boundaries. Mr. Watson, does the county, can the county do anything about that at all? Do we have any power at all?
You know, Councilman Cronin, I'm looking at it, but I was not aware this was going to come up, and so I just have to review it, and I report back with the information I have.
All right.
I just don't see how a park is something, highway, other things like that, maybe a little different, but not a park. You don't steal people's property for parks.
All right.
Have you folks hired an attorney?
We talked to, we talked to an attorney last week.
Yeah, you definitely seek legal counsel.
He said he'd go to the meeting with us next month, but we're talking about a lot of money, and so that's why I'm here in a way to see, but I think, I don't, I'm not sure if we really need to hire him or not, you know? We're not sure. We just had a consultation.
Okay, moving on. Are there any other speakers during public comments?
Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. I didn't want to interrupt your conversation, Mr. Cronin, Mr. Brazel, but it's time to listen to residents. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, county public and state advocate and a county resident. First of all, our county has some real money and budget problems. There's no reason, rhyme or reason for this. No increase in salary to the employees is shameful. Not asking for the increase in employee FTEs is shameful. We have a dramatic increase in revenues, and your spending is way out of control. You need to learn to live like the rest of us. $138 million, I heard, for corrections? Where are we going to come up with that money? Are you going to ask for another tax increase and put it on the shoulders and backs of residents? I asked that this county council take a pay cut. You make $18,750, and I asked you to take a 25% pay cut. The county executive makes $145,000, and I asked that he takes a 25% pay cut. I asked that Joanne Lycam, the Director of Administration, who makes $195,000, that she take a 40% pay cut. And I asked that we cut the $250,000 lobbyists who are full-time in Jefferson City on behalf of St. Charles County, because we don't need them. We have a contingent of 13 state reps and state senators. Your meetings at the committee of the whole are very, you know, they're very short. They do an injustice and defeat the purpose when you're paid $800 a meeting. You can't get, you can't wait to get back to your couches instead of tackling the real problems facing St. Charles County. It's bad government. Now, our county telephone system was down for five to six days. Still having problems causes a lot of problems to the public doing business with the county. We spend over millions upon millions in the IT department for telephone services, and I request that we get better service. The workshop meeting, the airing via the website internet, it was not obtainable. I had to find a TV to watch it on the cable. We pay over $1 million in the television broadcast service, and it's very frustrating when these services aren't delivered to our residents. Now, we had somebody in the highway department who hit, struck a person walking, killed them in Wentzville, a snowplow. Have we reached out to the family? I asked that the county release the report of findings, compensate the family, and make sure that there's an education fund for their kids, because the mother is no longer there. I am asking for a special investigation into County Prosecutor Tim Blomeyer. No more deals. Appointment of a special prosecutor to see if he can be charged for stalking, intimidation, harassment of a judge, criminal mischief, property damages, destruction of property, peeping tom, evading police, fleeing the scene, breaking up two marriages, has a high conflict of interest.
The alarm went off?
Yes.
I didn't hear it. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the alarm go off.
He has a-
Thank you very much.
He has a high conflict of interest with the sitting judge. And I ask that you hire a special prosecutor.
Time went off.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
No more speaker cards.
Okay. County Executive Elman, do you have an oral report?
No, sir.
No? Thank you. Seeing none, then we'll, seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I have, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove the information systems and the transportation bids off for just a quick discussion, please.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Then it carries.
On the information systems on the police department card readers, okay? I guess two questions. One is, when reading the documents, it doesn't, says it doesn't include, it says all devices to be installed by C and R, and this cost is not included in the proposal. So I'm assuming that we're going to be paying some labor to get these put in as well. I don't know how much that was going to be. And secondly, I guess the question I have is, I know that, I'm familiar with the scramble pad from using it downstairs to get in this building. Are you folks, are you happy with the security that the card readers give you? Is that system, can that system be hacked, or bogus cards be made like they do with credit cards? That's two questions I have for that.
First one, the CNRs for the wiring, so I'm not sure if Christine, do you know that, Matthew? Do you happen to have the wiring estimate? Would you mind coming on up to the microphone then?
Yeah, councilmember, the wiring is with CNR, and that's roughly $16,000 for the wiring.
Okay.
So, yeah, we are hiring additional labor to do that installation of those card readers.
And are you familiar, I guess, are those card readers going to access a chip or a mag stripe, or what are they going to have?
Yeah, so it's HID cards, and when you order the cards, there is a proprietary number that's assigned to them, so only the company that is providing us the cards know that proprietary number. It's potential that somebody could use some technology to mirror the cards, but without having that in their possession, they couldn't.
You think it's more secure than the system we're using currently?
I think there's benefits to it. There's benefits and there's disadvantages to both, honestly.
The scramble system's time-consuming. It's time, yes.
It's time-consuming, and also, I mean, if the person's looking over a shoulder of somebody putting it in, that code's now, you know, compromised.
You're now worried about the security with this card system, then you comfortable with?
I'm not concerned.
All right, thank you. That's all I want to hear.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Cronin, in those locations where we did say have an extreme level of concern about security, and I will talk about this outside of the context of the jail, you can do two factors. So out at the police department, for example, and on the gates at the EOC, we don't use it quite configured like that, but you could have both a key code number and a swipe card so that you're having more than one type of authentication required.
Okay, thank you.
Do you wish to put it back on the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to put that back on the agenda. I have one question for John Greifshew about the Genetech gateway green light. Is that going to be, are we getting any federal reimbursement from that at all, do you know, on the tying the Genetech software into the gateway green light?
No, that's- Amanda, that's correct. It's not federally funded, that piece, is it? This is just providing enhancements so that the cameras can be seen by more than just the traffic controllers. So it's not a CMAC federal fund project.
But it's $94,000. It could be one hell of a tool to be used for an Amber Alert or a police department, or I think we discussed that after my house got burglarized, and it'd sure be nice if those cameras saw the bad guy going away. But that's, you have the ability to do that with us, correct?
Well, provide us the capability so that there's an emergency at the EOC, such as a flood event, they'll be able to access the cameras that we have on the gateway green light system, allow them also, if we have a major accident, also to be able to view those cameras within the same platform that they use for any other emergency management.
Okay, pretty powerful tool.
It is. We have, how many cameras in total? The 200? 277 cameras they'll bring into our Genetech system. They'll make them available for the folks that we have in emergency management. So it's a powerful tool, and it'll help them during these points of emergency.
Okay, thank you. I'm good with that. I'll put that back on the agenda as well. Yes, sir.
Is there a second to put it back?
Yes.
Don't need it? Okay.
No.
All right. Okay, for the balance of the, for the consent agenda, is there a motion to- Yeah, motion to accept. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda has passed. We'll move on to bills for final passage, starting with Bill 4786.
Bill Number 4786, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Social Services, Family Support Division Department, and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to the Skill Up and Jobs League Services Contract.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill Number 4786? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Social Services, Family Support Division Department, and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to the Skill Up and Jobs League Services Contract. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill Number 4786 has passed. We'll move on to Bill 4787.
Bill Number 4787, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Green Light Program, Federal Project CMAQ 5414637.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill Number 4787? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Green Light Program, Federal Project CMAQ 5414637. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Bill Number 4787 has passed. We'll move on to Bill 4788.
Bill Number 4788, an ordinance approving a supplemental amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Green Light Program, Phase 6, Federal Project CMAQ 5414634.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill Number 4788? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
An ordinance approving a supplemental amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Green Light Program, Phase 6, Federal Project CMAQ 5414634. An ordinance approving a supplemental amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Green Light Program Phase Six, Federal Project CMAQ 5414634. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill number 4788 has passed, and we'll move on to bill 4789.
Bill number 4789, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Charles for the use of St. Charles County Transportation Sales Tax Funds for road improvements needed to support the FedEx Freight Expansion Center Project.
Are there any questions or comments on bill number 4789? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Charles for use of St. Charles County Transportation Sales Tax Funds for road improvements needed to support the FedEx Freight Expansion Center Project. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill number 4789 has passed, and we'll move on to bills for introduction, starting with 4790.
Bill number 4790, requested by Dr. Mary Case, sponsored by John White, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a program services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for violent death and overdose death surveillance reimbursement.
Are there any comment, any questions or comments on bill 4790? Seeing none, move on to bill 4791.
Bill number 4791, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by John White, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent, and Nauman Watalawala as an independent contractor.
Are there any questions or comments on bill 4791? Seeing none, that concludes bills for final pass or introduction, and that, are there any bills to be removed from the table?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know if it's appropriate time, if you want to do another night, but I've got a little information regarding table, bill 4770, that I'd like to pass on.
I guess we have to take it off the table, have any discussion? Is there a motion to take it off the table?
I'll make a motion to take it off the table. Brief discussion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, off the table.
Former Councilmember Klinghammer, now St. Charles, he can have developed me to put a pretty point, a pretty strong point about the two, one-by-two signs in the front of the buildings. I did check with some of the tenants of some of the national chains that move, that are prominent in this county, and they're real concerned about their curb appeal, and they don't like that idea at all. So I think we ought to put the signage in front of the buildings off that bill. However, the, actually showing the actual amount of sales taxes collected into residents at the point-of-sale terminals, got pretty strong support from that, even within the communities that I talked to, as far as alderman and communities. There's also an article in the paper this week that you might want to read about the Missouri State Otter slamming the oversight of the special tax districts in St. Louis. So I don't know if we want to go with that bill, if we want to leave it on the table, but if we're going to do anything with it, I think we ought to strike the one-by-two sign requirement in the front of the building. I think we ought to inform the public more than just the CID's. We heard the people from, from the Show Me Institute talking about also TDEs and other taxing districts. I think people, the public ought to be, have the right to be informed of all those special taxing districts, and all the other taxes they're paying when they go in the store and flop down their sales tax money. So I don't know where you want to move with that. This is something I produced for the last meeting, but I just thought before I did any work on it, any further, to get an idea what the council's pleasure is on this.
I have a comment on that. So, here's my concern. I appreciate being clear with this and transparent, but we keep talking about, we have budget shortfalls, because people are not buying locally, and they're buying online. So I appreciate where this bill was intended, to open up transparency, so you know, but in my mind, what you're going to do is put something up that says, if you buy this from a local retailer, you're going to pay a tax that you do not have to pay online. So, if you're an informed consumer, while you're in the store, you may buy this now, because you didn't know this until you got here, but I bet any future purchase that you're going to make, you're going to look online to see if you can go buy that, because now you know I pay an additional tax at my local merchant. So what I'm afraid is going to happen from this well-intended bill is we're going to give people another reason to go shop online, which is going to, A, not give us the tax revenue that, as we just discussed, we desperately need, B, it's going to hurt my local merchant. So I'm not in favor of this, just from a standpoint of, anything that could possibly hurt my local merchant, I don't want to do. And I appreciate the transparency and all of that, but man, I'm just afraid it's one more reason to get people to buy it from Amazon rather than buy it from my local people.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Brazel?
I agree with what Mr. Cronin said. They're paying a tax either way, and then it's an add-on tax for the developer who's going to be making all the money off the development and taxing the citizens to build his development, and it's not fair to the people who are not in these developments and these CID's and so forth. So I don't think there's anything wrong with posting it behind the counter, maybe not on the front door, but behind the counter, because you're telling people that here's the scenario, and this city or whoever chose or allowed this to go on, so just so you're informed, right? That's how I see it, because otherwise, the people who are, like in that scenario in Wentzville, the Schnooks and the Dearbergs, they built their buildings, and they did it right, and they didn't take any tax hits, and now this new developer with the food, whoever the heck it is going to be, the Whole Foods or whatever, they come in there and they get all these tax breaks? That's not fair. They play by the rules. That's how I see it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Will Mr. Elam yield for inquiry?
By all means.
All right, I think you made a good point, all right? Here's my suggestion on how you fix it.
Okay.
You add to the notice. And by the way, you don't have to pay this extra cent, or cent and a half, or half cent, if you go right down the street to another, another store that sells the same thing.
Assuming the other store down the street does sell the same thing.
So you put that right on there, instead of them going home and buying it online, they'll go down the street, or next door, or wherever they have to go to buy it for a cent less. Or, you know, if they're in a hurry, they'll just go ahead and pay the extra cent.
They will.
But I don't think, I think you got a good point, I just think there's a better way to remedy. Just for what it's worth, I've been a retailer in this county for my entire life, okay? People are smart, okay? They know they're going to be paying sales tax. What they don't know is 1% of that sales tax goes to the state for education. They don't know about the 8th of percent conservation. They don't have a breakdown of what all that money goes to. A generation ago, Mr. Elman is a vintage like me, that he'll remember when this was posted, every cash register in this St. Charles County. So it's nothing new, it's something old. And I really think that people would be more supportive of paying sales tax if they realize it went to Parks and Soils and education, and like our county, it went to our transportation of our roads and capital improvements for things like our jail. So I think not only is it transparent, but I think it informs the public of some stuff that a lot of people don't even know are aware of. And, you know, if we're going to do anything with it, I think this is the way it needs to go, and if you really want to fix the inequities between online merchants and us, then we need to do, we talked about earlier, is get the governor and the state legislators to make Missouri a state that collects online taxation like every other state but Florida does. That's my spiel.
All right, is there a motion to put this back on the table?
Put it back on the table, and anybody else have any comment about where to go with this?
I'll second putting it back on the table.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? It's back on the table. That concludes most business for this evening, except for announcements and miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything?
Ryan, do you want to do your spiel that you do every year for your Christmas holiday in the parks, with the Boone Home, and whatever else you've got going on?
It's your spiel.
So, once again, the Daniel Boone Home is hosting the Christmas candlelight celebration, which is the first two weekends, Friday and Saturday in December. The Christmas candlelight event has been growing every year. We average, I believe, around a thousand people a night now. It's, it's really well-attended. The entire village is lit up by candlelight, there's vignettes in all the outbuildings and things. There's some new things that'll be going on this year that we haven't done this year that you'll have to come out and see, but there's something for everyone out there to enjoy. Starts at, I believe, 6:00 and goes to 10:30 on those nights, Friday through Saturday.
Two weekends?
Two weekends, first two weekends and December, Friday and Saturday.
And so the tickets, they sell out every year typically?
Yep.
And so if you haven't been to this thing, it's pretty cool, it's really phenomenal. So I highly recommend it. David, this has been going on for years, when Andre owned it, and then Lindenwood owned it, and this has been going on for a long, 20 years probably, it's a great tradition.
If you go online and preorder your tickets, you save some money, too, at the door.
And then is that it for the holidays in the parks?
Those are our main ones. Our Christmas, our Christmas train exhibit opens up November 30th at the Heritage Museum. If you haven't been to the Heritage Museum, we have done an awesome train display in the meeting room there. Bring the kids out and enjoy that. There's all sorts of different activities going on. We have a nature, our crafting with nature ornament program, and a holiday centerpiece